All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Everyone could find their seat, there are a lot of seats. This is our temporary home, which is very nice. And we're gonna hear about why this is our temporary home a little later tonight. If all of you could silence your cellphones, just take a moment to silence your cellphones. And we will begin by rising for the Pledge of Allegiance. We have questions here.
(Pledge of Allegiance). I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is our first meeting of 2015, so Happy New Year to everyone. And we will, we don't have any proclamations tonight, so we'll begin with the consent agenda. And is there any item that anyone would like to have pulled off and considered separately or special comments about? Yes?
Item B, please.
B?
B.
B, okay. Okay, so there may be people here that would like to make comments about item D regarding the resolution on fracking. And I think what we can do here is have a motion to approve the consent agenda omitting item B, and then if anyone wants to make a comment, we can do that.
So moved.
Okay. And how about?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda omitting item B. If there's anyone who would like to comment on the consent agenda, this is the time to do so. All right. Seeing none.
Oh, there's one.
Yeah, okay. Don't be shy. It's a new venue, but you're just... So, just like in the old place, three minutes for comments.
Sure. I'll be short. This is regarding the resolution closing hydraulic fracturing, and I just wanted to express thanks and appreciation for passing it. And Asheville is now joining a host of other western North Carolina municipalities and counties who have passed resolutions against fracking. And hopefully, others will continue to do so until fracking is banned in our state. Thanks.
Thank you. And I'll have, I just want me to remind speakers to please state your name for the record.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Timothy Sattler, and I wanted to second Sally's sentiment there and, you know, commend Asheville for taking the position that we've taken. I come from Pennsylvania originally, and, you know, I have a number of friends, well, people that I'm familiar with and have met through the years that have had their land kind of devastated and had some serious health, negative health impacts that have stemmed from fracking. And it's just really important that we've done what we've done. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on the motion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we've adopted the consent agenda. And item B, did you want to consider it and vote on it, or we're delaying it?
So, Gwen and I both have some comments about this, I think. And so what this item is about is executing an agricultural lease with Balsam Gardens for 11 acres of land for commercial ag production at Azalea Park. In conversation with Nikki Reed, here's what I learned, that we had had a longstanding contract with a different farm outfit. That expired, that contract expired. This group came forward saying they wanted to look at, just kind of continuing the same way we were doing business out there. When this, when we saw this on the consent agenda, we realized it was an opportunity to really look at how we could fold this into the vision laid out in the Food Action Plan. And we were looking at, just kind of creating a process around this to see what is the highest and best agricultural use of this land. Now, we're not gonna be able to get all that together by growing season this year, so what staff has recommended is the possibility of doing a one-year lease with the outfit that came forward. And during that period of time, putting together a process to examine other uses for that parcel. So that's the proposal that I have tonight, and that's a motion to that effect.
Yeah, I agree with Gordon. I don't really have a process as to how we would decide, you know, possible alternative use for this, but I do hope that we could open this up to a wider group of people to get some ideas from the community. 11 acres of urban land is a lot for agricultural use. So I would second Gordon's motion.
Are there representatives from the company that wants to take this land over? I would feel, I would feel bad changing without talking to them.
Come on up to the microphone. Come on up, speak. Sure. And just state your name.
Steven Beltrum with Balsam Gardens. So I don't know what everybody knows about me. We've been farming in Jackson County for about seven years, or that we lived in Asheville. And we purchased, we've been, what we've been doing in Jackson County is going to tailgate markets in Haywood County and Jackson County, as well as selling to a lot of grocery stores in Asheville. I could list them all. And we've been operating a CSA and all that sort of thing. So we purchased 27 acres of bottom ground in the city limits in West Asheville. So we're selling our place in Jackson County. We own three acres, and we've been leasing several other properties for the past number of years. And so, so we have a track record leasing farm land and all that kind of stuff. So we've been growing about five acres of vegetables. We're looking to expand. Now, the land that we purchased in West Asheville has been in conventional tomato production. So we have to transition it to organic, which takes 36 months. So in the meantime, what we're gonna be doing is pastoring livestock on cover crops and building the soil fertility there, as well as growing some vegetables that don't need to be certified. So our interest in, in the city-owned land is that it's already been certified organic. And we're really looking to expand our production and do a lot more wholesaling. So New Sprout Organics, who has been using it for something like six years, approached us and said, you know, here's an opportunity where you could grow some certified organic product immediately. So, so that was our interest in it. Use it as we're transitioning our other farm, and, you know, in the long run, we could keep using it or whatever. So our biggest interest in a three-year lease is that, you know, at least, instead of just a 12-month, 12-month lease, is that, you know, we're gonna have to buy some equipment and put down a lot of soil amendments and do a lot of fertility management on it. We've already looked at the soil tests and stuff like that. So having a little bit of a larger window, like three years, would let us spread out our line and also allow us to buy, you know, some, some equipment that we need to expand into production to that scale. So, and then at that time, you know, we could renew, we'll also have a pretty large urban farm in West Asheville. So we're super excited about, you know, really having like a urban farm on scale in the city limits. I think that's something that isn't really going on in a lot of places, so we're really excited about the move and hope it all comes together.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to be clear.
Yes.
You're not entirely comfortable with on-year arrangement, you would prefer a three-year arrangement?
Absolutely, yeah.
Would you say no to a one-year arrangement?
I would have to seriously think about it.
Okay.
Because, because of the capital outlay that we're gonna have to make buying this equipment, because we're gonna be going from, you know, five acres of vegetables up to 11, so we, we need a bigger tractor, which is a payment. I mean, that's the biggest deal, is we're gonna have to take on tractor payment. And so locking in that tractor payment to manage the larger-scale farm for 12 months is a lot of risk.
And I'm gonna ask you another question. I realize you're a little conflicted.
Yeah.
Your answer perhaps.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If the city were to say, well, let's just let the, the land go fallow for a year.
Right.
Is, does that make it problematic the following year to, you know, if we, we go through a process and select somebody to get, you know, get on the land in 2016, does that add cost? Does it add difficulty to farming the land a year later? Is that a fairly simple thing to adapt to? If it's not?
Yeah, for me, or from a farmer's, from a general farming perspective? No, I don't think it's gonna hurt the land for it to sit there. You know, it, it wasn't an annual cover crop, so, so what's gonna happen is that it's gonna grow back to annual weeds instead of, you know, like it doesn't have a perennial cover crop on there, so it's gonna go into annual weeds and kind of become a weedy mess, but it's not gonna, other than building up weed bank, it's not gonna...
Well...
The minerals aren't gonna go anywhere if that...
Thanks, Gwen and Gordon Oakes. Well, to me, you know, we've, the staff has in good faith worked with these guys to arrange something. Now, a new proposal is here that is not necessarily great for you guys. I'd be interested in putting this off for two or four weeks, two weeks or four weeks, so that staff can work more closely with these guys and then sort out what the options are, because there's a scenario here where we don't, we don't have a tenant on that property going, you know, for a full year, and it's out of production for a year. And that, I'm not sure that's what you were interested in.
I thought I understood that we're just, I mean, we're talking about just delaying it briefly to try to make sure we...
No, they were suggesting a one-year lease, that we agreed to a one-year lease tonight, and I'm hearing from this gentleman that that's not necessarily what is of interest to him. So I don't think there's been a...
I don't know. I can't say right now, you know, I just learned on the way here that that maybe is where it's gonna go.
Yeah, and that's my concern.
I have to...
It's not fair to you for you to hear from City Council that we wanna muscle you into a one-year lease tonight. So I'd just say, let's put it off two weeks. Work closely with staff, come up, come back in two weeks to figure out where we wanna go.
Fair enough. I'm willing to put it off another couple of weeks. I think that going forward is, if we look at the language of the Food Action Plan that was passed unanimously by the City Council, and look at the language in there around using city-owned land for agricultural purposes, it sounds like y'all are doing really good work. And I'm really, I'd like to come out and see your land in West Asheville, actually, and see what you're doing.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm sure too.
But as we're, as we're looking at, what are the other possible opportunities for this city-owned land? Is there room for farm incubation, which is something that's happening in a lot of cities across the country? Is there room for demonstration stuff? Is there room for partnerships with MANA, with ABCCM, with the Nature Center? There's a lot of stuff that I think has not yet been explored. And I think, I do think, you know, Nikki reached out to some potential partners and didn't find any takers immediately and kind of moved forward with what we already had, but I think that we might miss opportunities here if we don't take a more deliberate approach.
I don't disagree, I mean, where I'm coming from, I don't disagree with a deliberate approach, but I just, I think it's not fair to have a person on his way to City Council that we're trying to change him to a one-year lease without, he is having an opportunity to work with staff, so I'm just saying, let's go do that for two weeks and see how it shapes up. Gary, any thoughts about that? Does that seem reasonable from a staff perspective?
Yeah, I think the, if the council would like more information, I'm not sure we'll be able to explore all the options that Gordon is suggesting would be there, but we could lay out the decision-making process that got us to this point. And I think we'd still be faced in two weeks with whether or not you enter into a three-year or a one-year lease arrangement, because it would take until next growing season to pursue seriously alternative models.
Agreed. Well, I'm willing to withdraw my motion, and we can look at this again at the next meeting in January.
When is that next meeting in January?
Twenty-seven.
Two weeks from today.
Would that give you enough time to evaluate, evaluate your opinion on the one-year lease?
Yeah.
Well, and that's, I think that's gonna be the question I would ask, would you be willing to do that?
And perhaps during that time period, you and I could get together and I'd love to kind of see what you're doing and learn more about your operation.
Okay, C-Sol had a comment.
Yeah, I would interject, but as a 45-year organic gardener and occasional farmer, I think a one-year lease is unfair to a grower. There's too much invested in land, and the labor, the time, everything, one season at a time is no way to lease agricultural land, my view.
I do think we're gonna butt up against that challenge, so, and that may be what we find, but if we can, it's not gonna harm anything to wait two weeks to kind of vet this a little bit more.
Right.
That's all right. So we don't need to have a motion or take any action to put this off for two weeks. I think that we can just leave it at that, and we appreciate you coming down here, and y'all, we'll probably be back at the old place by then.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you. We have a, it's not on your agenda, but we have one presentation to be made tonight by the new James Ayers, Ayers Ayers.
James Ayers.
Regarding the City Hall water line break. And Gary, if you could introduce Mr. Ayers, that would be great.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to introduce James Ayers, our Director of General Services. General Services includes building management and fleet management, and I think what we experienced last week and what James brought to bear justified the investment in a Director of General Services. James, if you'll come to the microphone. James has a degree in engineering, science, and economics from Vanderbilt, a master's administration from Central Michigan University, has over 20 years, primarily with the exception of the last five years in public sector, 20 years of development, building, and contract industry experience, was formerly the Assistant Town Manager in Lufton, South Carolina, making the transition to public administration, and we're glad to have James in our organization. He has did tremendous work, it was a team effort, but having James's leadership over the Thursday through the weekend produced significant results for us with that James.
Welcome. Now, we did kind of a hazing thing. I'm just kidding. What's happening?
Thank you, Mayor Manheimer, members of City Council, and of course, esteemed colleagues. Thank you so much for the opportunity to appear before you this evening. I am before you, of course, to give an update on the significant incident at City Hall that caused the closure of the building, beginning approximately 11:30 on Thursday morning. Of course, this particular incident, I have, I have to say, I regret the disruption to city staff and to all the citizens due to the closure of the City Hall itself. However, I must tell you, I am honored to be part of a team that both work around the clock to get the City Hall back into an occupiable state, and also they continued operations to serve the citizens, visitors, and the businesses, even in the face of some severe adversity. I'd like to review for you what happened at City Hall, the steps to recovery, and of course, future actions designed to prevent those, recurrence of those types of situations. Now, as I mentioned, just before lunchtime on Thursday, a fitting on the fire sprinkler system on the seventh floor of City Hall, it broke. The fire alarm was activated, and the building was evacuated. Asheville Fire Department responded immediately, and the facility maintenance team discovered the broken, broken fitting on the seventh floor and worked together with the Asheville Fire Department to get the water shut off. The pipe fitting was an older piece of equipment there, and the sprinkler system in the unoccupied part of City Hall there on the seventh floor, and it was slated for renovation later this year. It is uncertain whether weather played a part in the pipe failure, but building temperatures went well below normal levels following an electrical brownout during the night that affected the heating system there at City Hall. Water from the sprinkler system did impact some areas below the seventh floor, most notably on the sixth floor and in the elevators. I will tell you that I personally saw many wonderful examples of outstanding teamwork and something I'd like to call Asheville ingenuity. For example, we, we needed to move water very quickly away from sensitive areas of the building, and the facility staff member had the bright idea of removing the toilet fixtures from their places, and then at the same time, the Asheville Fire Department used squeegees to move water to these natural drains. I'll tell you, that may be an interesting example, but I will tell you that ingenuity and quick thinking prevented, prevented us from some significant damage that could have been. Although the Asheville Fire Department and facility maintenance did act as first responders in this case, we immediately received offers of help from, from many divisions and departments throughout the city. So that reinforced to me the, the real teamwork and support from this genuinely caring staff, and I'm extremely grateful for that. Well, we also have to move from what we call evacuation and emergency into recovery mode. So city staff has worked together with some outstanding local contractors right here in Asheville, and they work to repair the damaged City Hall and get us back to occupancy. We had companies on site shortly after the, after the incident to dry and clean affected areas, all in, of course, in the building interior, fix the fire sprinkler system itself, repair the elevators, and help us with moving activities. Within 31 hours of the initial incident, we had, we had the water damage remediation, we had the fire sprinkler repaired, we had all the systems inspected, and two elevators up and running. Following inspections by the appropriate, appropriate folks in the building and fire code officials, as well as the North Carolina Department of Labor, we were able to reoccupy the building from the fifth floor on down. Now, the sixth floor will require some level of restoration, so this area will be considered a construction zone accessible only to personnel involved with the construction activity. The unoccupied seventh floor also has that same designation. Because the sixth floor will require some repair work, such as removal and replacement of drywall and ceiling tiles, the Human Resources Department is being moved to temporary quarters, and these are located at the Old Bank Building at 20 South Pack Square next to the Jackson Building. HR staff will be up and running in the new space Thursday morning with full access to all desktop technology. In the meantime, HR staff members have maintained continuity of service to both internal and external customers remotely during this time, this time of transition. We are also taking steps to prevent, to the extent possible, future instances of this pipe fitting failure. Moving forward, we will continue to monitor and assess building systems, especially those vintage components that could be prone to failure. Further, we already have plans to, to modernize the seventh and eighth floors of City Hall as part of the approved CIP project to renovate the exterior as well as parts of the interior of that building. We will press forward with these efforts in order to preserve and protect city assets, including its crown jewel, City Hall. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. We have questions?
I have a comment and a question. The comment is, it seems to me that the HR department is dangerously close to the French Broad Chocolate Lounge at this point. And the question is, do you know what caused the brownout? Or the partial brownout?
We're not privy to the information as to brownout, brownout, but we did observe the low, the low voltage conditions that did coincide with the, with the weather dropping down into the single digits and presumably significant power lows throughout the region, so certainly in unforeseeable circumstance.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, that, that's it for presentations and reports. We have a few items on our public hearings agenda. And the first is a public hearing to consider a resolution to permanently close an unnamed alley off Broad Street. And Greg Schuler is somewhere, he is going to talk to us about this.
Members, it's a pleasure to be here.
Watch your papers, they end up being, yeah, right.
You can see what I'm in, y'all have already seen this. This is a short alley between Broad Street and Thud Rocker's parking lot, and you can see North Charlotte Street over here. It's an open, an open alley that's with...
You said an open alley.
An open alley, that's correct. Your consideration to permanently close this unopened alley, and we have, we've been before multi-motor commission way back in August, and is there, are there any questions?
Anyone have any questions about this? You might wanna just explain what happens when we close a paper alley like this.
It reverts back to, in this case, I'm not stating the same property on both sides.
Both sides, so it'll just...
It's not always that way in this case.
Okay. I will open the public hearings. If there's anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come forward. Did you want to speak?
Yeah.
Oh, you did not? Okay, watch your shifting in your chair. I will close the public hearing. All right, do I have a comment, motion?
I move to approve, to permanently close the unnamed alley off Broad Street as depicted in the documents.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good, thank you. All right, the second item is a public hearing to consider authorizing an economic development incentive grant for the expansion of Lenamar Corporation, and Sam Powers is here to talk to us about that.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of City Council. Welcome to the U.S. Salio Center. We are here tonight for consideration by City Council of an economic development incentive grant under the city's incentive policy. This would be a grant for Lenamar Corporation, and Lenamar Corporation is one of the world's leading designers and manufacturers of precision metal components and systems in a number of global clusters. The company is proposing one of the largest new capital investments in Asheville's history, $190 million in additional production equipment and facility improvements at its facility in South Asheville off of Hendersonville Road and Long Schulz Road. The company has requested the consideration of a cash grant under the city's economic development incentive policy. The project also includes the creation of 400 new manufacturing jobs with an annual wage of $39,000. Just as a note, as this is being considered by council, this is, this is, this new expansion commitment by Lenamar is an increase from a previous commitment they made and council approved in June of 2012. That announcement was $75 million, so it's an addition of $115 million for a total of $190 million, and 150 new jobs in addition to what was approved in 2012 for a total of 400 new manufacturing jobs. None of the incentives that were approved in 2012 have been paid, so this would be replacing that previous approval. Lenamar has requested the consideration of this performance-based incentive grant under the city's policies. The performance-based grant would be in an amount equal to 95% of the ad valorem city property taxes paid by Lenamar in the prior calendar year for a period of up to seven years. There would also be a catch-up period, which would allow, if they have met benchmarks of up to 85% of their investment, an additional two years for them to complete their investment and receive their incentives. Payments do not begin until the investment is made, the taxes are paid and verified, and the company has requested the incentive payments. The amount will take into consideration the estimated ad valorem taxes that are created, again, equal to, up to 95% of the estimated revenue. Any of the amounts paid to Lenamar are subject to a legal agreement and adjustment or recapture if the terms and conditions of the agreement and job creation are not fulfilled. The city will fund this incentive from the city's general fund, the per... The purpose of this incentive is to encourage Lenamar to proceed with its expansion in the city, to create new jobs and capital investment in the city. Staff believes that the project will further the economic development interests of the city in a number of ways, including, but not limited to, creating a substantial number of jobs, having a wage equal or above the average wage for Bunton County, enhancing the city's tax base and the city's tax revenues, and encouraging the retention and expansion of a major industrial operation in an existing facility in the city of Asheville. The city's economic development policies and the council's strategic operating plan are achieved in a number of different ways through this project, including the job creation and capital investment, retention and expansion, developing an identified manufacturing cluster in the city, and it also supports regional and state cooperation. Both the county and the state of North Carolina are also participating in this project. From a financial impact, this project has a financial positive impact on the city. Lenamar's capital investment is one of the largest single manufacturing investments in the city's history. The project has significant potential for additional expansion, as well as substantial generation of local and state taxes from job creation. Initially, during the grant period, the city will receive approximately 5% of the new incremental revenue. After the grant is completed, the city will receive, of course, 100% of the new taxes. The staff recommendation is to approve the resolution for the economic development incentive grant for Lenamar Corporation not to exceed $3.5 million. Staff will, of course, be available after the public hearing to answer any questions that council has. Tim Lampkin with our EDC is here, along with a representative from Lenamar. I would ask that Tim, if he would introduce Heather from Lenamar Corporation for the comments at the beginning of the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. My name is Tim Lampkin, I am with the Economic Development Coalition of Asheville in Bunton County, and it's a pleasure to introduce a friend that we've worked with for almost four years now. Heather Smercinis, the Director of Business Development for Lenamar Corporation. This was a competitive project, and I know that Heather and her leadership team were cheering for us and hoping that we could land these jobs and this investment here. So it's a pleasure, Heather, if you'll come up. And again, Heather Smercinis, the Director of Business Development for Lenamar.
Thank you. I just really wanted to thank you for the support in our business since we started here in Asheville. We're really looking forward to expanding and bringing in technology and a lot more manufacturing jobs to the city, so thank you. Any questions?
Are there any questions?
I have a question, actually, it's for staff, not for you.
Well, thank you, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. I note in the staff report that listed it as a con on this. They always list pros and cons if y'all aren't looking at the thing. I'm not calling it a con, it is... Okay, that the grant is formulated is based on the use of approximately 95%. Why of the value? Why is that considered negative on this?
I think the best answer for that is, if not for this project, in a normal situation, if the city was not providing incentives, 100% of the tax revenue created goes to the general fund. In this case, some of it is going, you know, in a performance-based grant to the company. What I would add to that con, though, is but for this project and the city and the state and the county's participation, this project in all likelihood would not be in Asheville, and so, you know, honestly, would not be receiving any of the tax revenues.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that there wasn't something about the number that was the negative.
No, sir.
It's the concept.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Right, the public hearing is still open. If anyone else would like to make a comment on this item, this would be the time. Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'll move approval of the resolution authorizing an economic development incentive grant for expansion of Lenamar Corporation in the city of Asheville. And just to comment together with that, Mr. Lampkin was up here introducing, as we're seeing there. And I think that we're lucky in this town to have the staff we do, both at the city with Sam Powers and his staff, and also at the Economic Development Coalition. And 10th century here, I wanted to say that out loud, I appreciate that. You know, these incentives are sometimes controversial. There are a lot of people here tonight that don't normally attend city council meetings, and, you know, the question I would tell them, gosh, why would we be giving away $3.5 million? Sam made the point that, you know, without participating in this system of incentives, we would not see Lenamar here today, or GE Capital a few months ago, or New Belgium even coming to visit us to consider locating here. So it is the way the game is played. I wish it weren't. I wish it were a level playing field in a different way where incentives weren't a big part of it. That is the way the game is played, that's the way industries of this scale do filter through communities they might locate in. And please understand that it's highly likely that Lenamar will be here for years and years to come, well past this few years of horizon time until the incentive grant is worked out, and they'll be paying the full share of taxes four years after that, very likely. So at the end of the day, it's a net win, and sometimes folks lose sight of that or don't understand the trade-offs there. So I just thought I'd offer that with my motion, thank you.
I need a second on the motion. Okay, and I know there's some people that want to make a comment, I just want to make a clarification, because one of the things you said triggered kind of one of my pet peeves about this, and that is, you mentioned giving away $3.5 million. And just so people understand how an incentive grant really works, we don't write a check upfront, we don't give away $3.5 million necessarily. What happens is, there is additional tax revenue, property tax revenue gleaned by the city because of the improvements the company makes to the property they're situated on. And that additional revenue is refunded, as it comes online, is refunded back to the applicant in the form of a grant. So they must build it, they must deliver before they receive any remittance of the additional tax revenue they generate. So there's sometimes a misnomer about that, people think that we actually sit here today and write a check, and then maybe they do deliver, maybe they don't, and that's not in fact how it works. They've got to deliver, and then they're only remitted a portion of what additional revenue they bring to the table.
And just to add on that very briefly, one of the strategic goals of the council is to continue with economic development and to bring living wage jobs to our community here. And so if you do the math on these jobs that are averaging $39,000 a year, that's essentially $20 an hour jobs that are coming, 400 jobs coming to the community here. So I appreciate the investment in our community here, and we're glad to have you here, and I appreciate the explanation as well on how the tax incentive system works as well, too.
Can you have a comment? No. Everyone was chomping at the bit for clarifying. Anyone else? Okay. We did close the public hearing, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All right, now, item C of public hearing, to consider an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance Regarding Conditional Zoning General Requirements, to clarify that conditions imposed may be more or less restrictive than the general use standards of the underlying district. You're just gonna have to explain what in the world this means. We have the Allen lines with us, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of City Council, members of the public. In Section 778 of the UDO, it's a section on conditional zoning, and we bring those applications to you on a case-by-case basis, project by project, and they're typically a rezoning effort with a site plan. On occasion, there are conditions that are different from the underlying general use standards in our UDO. And so they come to you as special conditions, we point them out, we typically advertise for them, it could be a setback modification or some other standard that cannot be met with a proposal in place. And so this wording amendment is a clarification language. The state law allows us to do this, it allows those conditions to be more restrictive or less restrictive than the underlying zoning district. And we've always taken it to mean that, and we've brought those to you in that fashion, like I said, pointing them out, making it very clear what's happening, what's not being met, what is being met. For example, we recently had the project near downtown is for six lots, and the developer asked for a reduction of the right-of-way and setbacks for those individual buildings that would, you know, houses that would eventually be built on these single-family lots. So that was an example of a reduction of less restrictive. Like I said, it's allowed by state law. So this language is to clarify that in the UDO to spell it out a little more clearly that it's a more or less standard, and we've evaluated it against our comprehensive plans we do, all amendments and even these conditional zoning requests. This amendment complies with the City Development 2025 Plan in that it allows increased flexibility in the application of zoning regulations. In the case of conditional zoning, formerly we called it conditional use zoning back in 2002 when the comp plan was adopted. Since about 2006, we've used conditional zoning as our term, and allows a rezoning request to be tied to a specific development plan from the comp plan while ensuring that the project is compatible with the neighborhood. The plan also encourages adaptive reuse of underutilized and vacant sites, and recognizes the need to have some flexibility in the implementation of zoning and building codes by maintaining a redevelopment toolbox, so it encourages that in the comp plan. The comp plan also recognizes the need for compatible infill development with opportunities provided on a case-by-case basis through a study at council through a rezoning action. And this encourages the redevelopment using a conditional zoning tool. In this way, this amendment is reasonable and in the public interest because it allows the projects, for projects which are more compatible with the surrounding area and which further comprehensive plan goals. The wording amendment would be changed to language provided here. All standards and requirements of the... All standards and requirements of the corresponding general use zoning district shall be met that the conditions imposed by the conditional zoning may be more or less restrictive than the general use standards if such conditions comply with the comp plan or other adopted plans and/or except where requirements are modified in accordance with subsection following this section that allows for modifications after the fact, minor modifications, I'll say. So this is setting up the UDO to be compliant with what we do and how we understand this law to work, and we'd ask for your approval of it. We did review it with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they provided unanimous support. Thank you.
All right, any questions or comments before, or questions before I open the public hearing? All right, we'll open the public hearing. We'll close the public hearing. All right.
I move to approve the proposed amendment to Section 778(c)(3)-3 as outlined in the report, and find the request is reasonable and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans because it allows for greater flexibility in granting conditions, which in turn allows for projects that are more compatible with their surrounding area.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. All right, item D, a public hearing to consider the conditional zoning of 10 Madison Avenue and 202 East Chestnut Street from RME Residential Multi-Family High-Identity District and Office District to Office District slash Conditional Zoning with changed conditions to landscape and setback requirements to allow the use of an existing single-family residence as a law office. Jessica Bernstein is here to talk to us about this.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, the public. As was stated, this is a conditional zoning request from Office and RME to Office CZ to expand an existing office use into an existing structure. As you can see on the exhibit A map, that does indicate zoning. The project site consists of two parcels at the corner of East Chestnut and Madison Avenue, just north of downtown. The parcels have a combined area of just 1.16 acres, it's a relatively small site. And this parcel on the corner is already zoned office, and the parcel behind it is the one that is currently zoned residential. As you can see on the aerial, there's two structures there, and this one on the corner is currently, it's a residential-style structure, but has long since been converted to a law office and is operating that way. The structure behind it that's residentially zoned is currently a residential dwelling and has been since it was constructed. Checked back in the pre-UDO zoning, and this lot has always been zoned for residential, R4 is what it was at that time. This is, the corridor is in the Chestnut Hill National Register District, and has an established pattern of adaptive reuse with commercial or office uses along Chestnut Street and residential behind. So this is an proposed expansion of that. You can see on the site plan that was included with your packets, there's the assumed structure that's a law office, it's Chestnut Street going north on Madison, and this is the currently residential dwelling. There's parking already behind that office building, and this proposal does propose expanding that, since there would be proposing to expand the square footage that's used for office, there's additional parking spaces that are required. There's only room on the site for five spaces, and nine would be required, so they would satisfy those four other spaces through shared parking agreements elsewhere. They've already had shared parking agreements for some of that overflow parking. There's a lot across the street, across Madison, there's also available spaces in the Fuddruckers lot just down the street. Shared parking agreement is common, and we have this with a lot of situations throughout the city. The access is generally in the same location right now, here's where the driveway is off of Madison. There's a small gravel driveway to the house that would go away, and they're proposing sort of a looped access. There's no sidewalk proposed along the side of the street, none would be required, and they would be retaining some mature landscaping, there's no open space required. There were a couple of conditions that were mentioned, so I just wanted to touch on that. When we've got existing structures, we often see that they don't comply with current setback requirements or have the ability to comply with landscaping requirements. This yellow line shows where that current day setback is required, it's, the building simply encroached into that area. Similarly, there is no room here, this is where they would be required to have a property line buffer when we require that between dissimilar zoning and the distance it would become on this, they would be required of 20-foot property line buffer that would be right about in the middle of the house. So they're asking to eliminate that requirement. There were some administrative approvals by the Transportation Department that were outlined in the report, and that just has to do with narrowing some width requirements in the parking lot, and that was approved based on the small size and the smaller use. One other condition that I wanted to note that was suggested by the Planning and Zoning Commission, so should you approve this project, that would be something that they would like to see that you include with your approval, and that was that the property would be used for office and residential uses only, not just any use that's available and open with the office zoning. You know, in a straight rezoning, the applicant could do anything that's under that zoning district. With the conditional zoning, you do have the ability to place those restrictions, and that was something that was discussed at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. So this project was approved with conditions by the TRC on the 20th of October, and it was recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission by a six-to-one vote in November. The dissenting member of the commission noted that comments, shared comments that you see in the staff report, noting that while looking at the zoning designation and the line on paper, it doesn't seem like that's significant to just continue this line of office zoning. When you're standing in person, this is where, this house is where the neighborhood begins. And so that was this thought, and those are aligned with the comments in the staff report. The staff has indicated that we do not support this rezoning request, this conditional rezoning request. We believe that this small-sized residential structure, it's ideally located to be a residential structure, it's walkable to multiple grocery stores, to schools, to parks, to multiple transit lines. While it may not be an affordable unit, it's small-sized and just the ideal residential unit in an ideal location. We've got comprehensive plan policies as well as... We've got comprehensive plan policies as well as city council's goals and noting preserving and protecting residential neighborhoods, maintaining and increasing and preserving our residential housing stock. And so staff has noted those all in the report as reasons to not convert this structure to a, an office use. We spoke to a number of neighbors and residents, and they had expressed concerns about that commercial encroachment into the neighborhood. Typically, when we have, with Planning Department, when we receive these types of calls from folks saying, can I convert this structure to a non-residential use, we entertain them on a case-by-case basis, and at times they are approved. But in this situation, given the context, we just agreed with the neighborhood that this was really a residential unit that, that needed to be protected and preserved in order to maintain that 24/7, lights on at night, bringing the trash cans out, kids playing in the street kind of quality that is in the neighborhood today. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Jessica, do you want to mention the protest?
Oh, thank you. Sorry about that. A protest petition has been received and has been validated by the staff.
So it would require six votes?
Yes.
May I just ask a question about the parking? So, and maybe you can help me out. So if this second property, the one on Madison, were ever to be sold, the zoning would stay office. So what happens with that shared parking situation, you know, not only sharing the law office with the, with the current home, but also the requirement that they have a shared parking arrangement with the one across the street in the Fuddruckers? Then what happens?
Good question. As a part of this proposal, they would be recombining, so it would no longer be two separate parcels. It would become one office conditional zone parcel. And so they, in the event of a sale, it would all be one, one entity that goes together. Those shared parking agreements do have to be renewed and reevaluated in many different events.
Okay.
So that, that one, that backlog couldn't just be on its own any longer.
Okay.
I have another question. Okay, Ben, if it is rezoned, even if it's limited to office, that building could be demolished and a much larger office building could be built there, right?
If that structure was, well, this, this application contains those conditions for allowing for the setback reduction and eliminating the property line buffer, and those are particular to this exact layout that exists today. If the, if someone were to demolish that structure when they rebuild, they'd have to comply with the current setbacks and property line buffers. So as you saw on that map, it's, it's a tight site.
Much smaller footprint then.
A much smaller footprint. Or they, or if a proposal, if that person had a proposal to do something different, it would have to come before this body or another body with the city to eliminate, to obtain a variance or eliminate one of those requirements or setbacks.
Jessica, can you describe how the, the look of the house would change if this, if this were approved?
I will. That was something that we discussed with the planning and the commission and the plans, and they're not, do I have the, I do have the ability to zoom a little bit. So this, the house that's on the corner, the large office building, there's no change proposed to that really at all. The changes are to the, to the, to the house. This is a bad picture of the house, but it's, it's a typical 19 teens bungalow. And what they're proposing, as shown here, is they would close in the porch because of accessibility requirements going from the house to the, to the office. The, here's where the, the parking would be kind of off to the side. I'm not sure if it's easy to see. And then there would be a ramp for the accessible parking, so access would be really from the side. So the porch would close in, and then also on this side, on the north side, where it's quite close to the other bungalow, they're proposing to close in the windows that are on that side. So those are the main differences that, for the, the structure. And the architects are here, so they can explain it probably better than I can.
We can hear from the applicant now. Anyone have any other questions for Jessica? Okay. See applicant in a row.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. Thanks for hearing.
So your notes, just, just so you know.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Am I cycle across magazine?
Stay. One, they started.
I live in the neighborhood, and actually, I took a photo from my office window today to share with you all, so that you could understand how close I am from my home to That's my house, right there.
Can, can you state your name for the, for the minutes, please?
Sure, I'm sorry. Jim Siemens, and I do business at Siemens Family Law Group. And presently, we're six people, and speaking to a comment I heard earlier from councilperson Helly, the jobs exceed, on average, 39,000 a year plus benefits. They're good jobs, and I would like to hire another lawyer, and that's why I'm here. I'd like to hire an appellate specialist. Whether we use the smaller house as office or conference rooms, I haven't determined, but there's no plan to demolish the house. The only thing we want to do with the house, as Jessica pointed out, is to reorient the entry so that what we have is more of a campus feel, so that the two homes communicate. My point in showing you my house is that every day I walk through this neighborhood and past my neighbors' homes, and I understand that they have an emotional reaction to my proposal, but I suspect that when it comes to fruition, it, it won't be offensive. I've done it before, and the result, I think, is great. We went through a historic renovation in 2005, and that home on the corner is sort of the gateway to the neighborhood. My intention is to similarly improve 10 Madison. Betty Sharpless is a master gardener. She does the landscaping at my office, and she does the landscaping actually on each corner of that intersection. It's really a Sharpless garden, and she will come down Madison as well, and I think the neighborhood will benefit from that. This is another example of renovation that I've done recently. Within the last six months between 202 East Chestnut and my residence, I think I've spent $50,000 on exterior improvements, and that's the type of property manager that I am. Let me get back to my notes. It's clearly adaptive reuse. It is a lack or a loss of housing stock, but what you have there right now is a one-bedroom bungalow. It's not going to profoundly affect the housing situation in Asheville, whereas I think I'm a small employer, but I'm a good employer. I think it's notable that the property adjacent to 10 Madison is not a part of the protest petition. That particular property owner is a lot like me. Where I live on Washington, I have an engineer and a temple for neighbors, and I think they're ideal neighbors in lots of ways. When I'm home, they're not, and that's okay for me, and that's the kind of neighbor I would be to the neighbor directly adjacent. I think he would benefit and appreciate what I'm doing. There is this concept of having a presence 24/7, and I understand that perspective. That's a different personality and a different desire, but I will always be in the neighborhood and always maintaining the property at least as long as I live. I, I think that's enough in the way of opening comments. I'm happy to answer questions. I'm aware of what I'm up against here. I need a majority vote, as I had before the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Does anyone have any questions with the applicant? Need to speak as well? I'll pass the applicant.
If I could reserve a minute or two for rebuttal, I'll sit down.
I, I haven't opened the public hearing yet. We're still, in terms of the process, I'm, I'm hearing from, we're hearing from the applicant now, and then I'll open it up.
For, for, for any proponents first and then opponents of the rezoning from the public, right?
Okay, opponents and then open it.
Do proponents first, anyone who's consistent with it, and then, and then switch it to opponent.
If I could have a moment for rebuttal at the conclusion, I'd appreciate it.
It's up to the council.
My name is Bill Sinkovik. I am an associate of George Stowe, the architect for the project. Just wanted to build on a couple of things that have been mentioned in both Jessica and Jim's presentations. It is our intent to maintain the feel of a residential neighborhood. Jim did a great job of presenting what was done with his building on the corner. The one point that I want to mention regarding the work that we're doing to the 10 Madison property, although we are in closing the porch, we still plan to add windows and a window-like, a door-like window in the front. We, we plan to maintain mature trees, including two huge hemlocks, a dogwood that is very kind of a popular tree in the neighborhood, as well as add additional vegetation. The parking lot that is added, we plan to use impervious pavers in a place where vehicles are already parking for the residents. In effect, the work that we're doing could be done, and no one would even notice that it changed from an office, or from a house to an office. Obviously, not that we would do that because that's illegal, but the, the thought process is, is that we are not changing. We're in fact enhancing the character of the residential area, and just wanted to let you know that I am available for any technical questions on this project.
Go ahead.
Me?
Yeah.
Did you mean impervious or pervious?
Uh, excuse me.
Pervious.
Pervious.
Okay. I didn't think you'd go into any trouble to mention impervious.
I apologize.
Any questions down table? Okay. All right, thank you. If there's an organized group in opposition to this rezoning, this would be the time to have a designated speaker provide, Tim, I, I think we've got some folks in the neighborhood, yeah, that.
I'm speaking in favor.
I'm going to open the public hearing, and when I open the public hearing, anyone and everyone can come and speak on the project, on the rezoning application or against. But at this time, if there's anyone who wants to speak on behalf of, of an organized opposition, to the extent there is one, this would be the time for you to have a single If I understand the process correctly.
Yeah, after you open the public hearing, if there's a group, normally everyone had three minutes.
Oh, you want me to open the public hearing and then, oh, oh, okay, then I, yeah, like we would typically do. Okay, right. So I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And what, what the guidelines provide is that individuals can speak for three minutes, but if you're speaking on behalf of a group, you can have up to 10 minutes. Those that yield their time as part of the group then would waive their opportunity to speak on the project. Okay, with that, would anyone like to speak on, on this item?
Good evening once again, City Council. My name is Timothy Southler, and I'd like to speak in, in support of the applicant. I think this is a great example of adaptive reuse, and, you know, while it is taken away from just a housing unit, I think with the measures that you all have taken recently to increase density, that would be, you know, will be adding plenty more housing stock to the market. I also think that it's as light an impact as a business could possibly be, being an attorney's office, you know, it's not a veterinary, a veterinary clinic or a doctor's office where there's a constant flow of traffic. So I think this is a, a solid project and would ask for your approval.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. My name is Angela Scacci, and I am and have been a resident and homeowner of 91 Broad Street since 1994. My family and I live on the corner of Broad and Madison. I'm here tonight, along with my resident, my neighbors of 20 years, to ask you to vote in support of the Asheville Planning and Zoning Staff recommendation to deny the rezoning request of 10 Madison Avenue from residential zoning to business zoning. 10 Madison Avenue is a home. It has been a home for almost 100 years. It is presently a home to a young family with two young children, ages two, and a, two years old and a seven-month, seven-month-old baby. Here's a picture of the house with toys and life. When you walk down Madison Avenue coming from downtown, it is quite clear that 10 Madison Avenue is the beginning of a residential neighborhood. The permanent loss of this home would have a negative and irreparable effect on our neighborhood, the character and quality of our residential community, a neighborhood where we spend all our time on our front torches during the warm months, where my daughter sets up her lemonade stand on hot summer Saturdays. That's just not coming up very well. Where Kate and James's boys ride their bikes and play ball. And where Bernard and his dog Raz can enjoy the passing hill of neighbors, or Arthur, the mayor of Madison Avenue, and Howard retell the history of our neighborhood. Where all, including many passing joggers, cyclists, and neighbors north of downtown, can enjoy Kate's beautiful flower garden. 10 Madison Avenue is a home that represents 20% of our homes on Madison Avenue between East Chestnut and Broad Street. We live in a neighborhood because we like the 24/7 activity of human life, and we, and we don't feel isolated when we wheel our recycling or trash bin at the curb, to the curbside at 10 o'clock on Monday night. We see the lights of our neighbors' TVs, the sound of people's voices when we walk out our door on a Saturday. We are a community of people living amongst each other 24/7. We are neighbors, we are friends, we look after each other. The loss of this home to an office means a building, not a home, and no human activity after 5:00 PM around the weekends. Please note, there are no businesses on Madison Avenue. East Chestnut is a commercial street, though it was originally and primarily residential. Madison is strictly a residential street and always has been. We want it to stay that way. Presently, there is an approximate 14% office vacancy in Asheville. At a time when maintaining and preserving the available housing supply is the goal of City Council, a vote to change this home to an office seems contradictory to Council's stated goals. To represent neighbors who were unable to attend tonight and are in immediate consensus to preserve the neighborhood, I present a keep Madison Avenue petition, residential petition. Based on our residential neighborhood request and the Asheville Planning and Zoning recommendation, please vote to keep 10 Madison Avenue a home. Thank you.
If you want to hand the petition to the city clerk? Thank you. Okay, we're learning one downside of our new location, which is, although nice to hear the church bells, I think they're still going over.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, we have, you want to, okay, Kate is going to defer to you.
Hi, my name is Kate Fisher, and I live at 15 Madison Avenue, which is sort of diagonally across from number 10 Madison. We've lived there since 1995. My husband is James, and we have two boys who have grown up in the neighborhood. This is tricky, awful stuff. We really like Jim. We like what he has done with the office, that he turned the house, that he turned into an office. Actually, I think it was an office before, that front Chestnut, and he has done a magnificent job restoring the house that's across from the temple, and he does, it's beautiful work, and, and he's been a great neighbor. This particular situation- This particular situation is sort of a matter of consistency and I don't like to value consistency above all other things because I don't think it ought to be a goal in itself. But we've had several different projects that have wanted to take residential pieces of our neighborhood, sometimes just a parcel, sometimes an entire street, and turn it into a variety of different things, whether it be office or commercial. And we have fought those consistently. We did it in 96 and 97 when there was a move to change Broad Street into an office commercial corridor. We fought it again a year ago when it was Hunter Property on Washington and Washington Road and Broad. And then right after that, we never had to bring it to council, but we had somebody approach us asking to buy a home right behind us on Washington, 19 Washington Road, to turn it into a mortgage broker investment banking office. And she was wonderful and had all kinds of great ideas. And our answer to her was, "It sounds really lovely, but we really want this to be a neighborhood and we're not interested in it being anything else." And so when Jim came, that was, you know, my first response was, you know, it would be really cool to find a way to say yes to this. And the more that we thought about it and talked about it, it just didn't feel like we could. And when we said in our letter that we feel like the little boy from Holland putting her finger in the dyke, I just can't think of a better metaphor for what I think we feel like, that if you look at our neighborhood from the picture that you saw at city council, and now I have too much stuff, I mean that you've seen, you can't really see the whole neighborhood. I mean, what you end up seeing is mostly office. This is Ms. Rose's house right here. This is the rest of the neighborhood, which goes out into a peninsula down to New Wellas, but it's neighborhood everywhere north. We're just the beginning of it and we're this teeny tiny block and we're just trying to save it. Also, about the historic renovation part, the house is occupied. The house was only unoccupied in the month or so after Ms. Rose died. Ms. Guglin died in July and the house was able to be rented pretty quickly and so it is occupied now. So it isn't so much a historic rehab in that it's already being used. We did also, since we want to make sure it's very clear, so here's the house which you all have seen now, but I think it's worth kind of noting. That's the next house, 12 Madison, and then Ms. Rose's house. As you can see, their roofs are maybe three and a half feet apart. It's close, it's tight in there. So we just wish, we really would like this to stay a home. It does mean something to us. It means something to us to look up at night and have somebody over there. We like hearing no one, even when sometimes it's a temper tantrum. We'd be like that there are people over there. And so we ask you to keep the residence zoning, residential zoning, whatever it is. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So we did bring our stopwatch with us over from City Hall. So I'm going to, I think I'm going to try to have to keep track of time here instead of depending on Maggie to give me a link. Well, I can do it from here. So just a reminder, three minutes each and if you could state your name for the record.
Yes, that would be nice. My name is Bernard Vernon Oliveant. I've been a resident there since 1954. So I grew up in that particular neighborhood. And the first thing I want to say to Jim is we are very conflicted to have to even come before you because he's done such a tremendous job with his office in rebuilding it and renovating it. But as Kate has said, this is the beginning of the erosion of the neighborhood. It takes a village to raise an area and right now we are a nice little tight village. Psalms 133rd says, "Behold how good and how pleasant it is when brethren dwell together." And this community has dwelled together through the years. When one one is sick, it builds and bleeds on each other. And right now we have several sick members. He mentioned the neighbor adjacent to the building that he wants to build. Arthur lives in this little house here. He's very sick. So we're talking about building a business right next to someone that is going to be tremendously disturbed. Right now, the residence is clearly a residential property. He said, "To build it as an office, maybe an expansion for another attorney, good intentions, but again, it's the erosion of the neighborhood that we are concerned about." No one has talked about the impact of traffic. With bigger businesses comes more traffic. Right now, as Kate has said, when you come down Madison, you've got an increase in traffic. Nobody's talked about speed bumps and the destruction or the danger to children, pets and animals in the area, but that needs to be mentioned also. And engineers talk about rebuilding this particular area. Traffic is the last key thing that's a critical element that has not been discussed. Chestnut is a major corridor for commercial traffic. Madison has become a corridor as a bypass for Charlotte Street and Merriman. No speed bumps. So if the council is going to look at something, please consider that also because now you are falling more traffic into our residential area. Again, Bernard Oliveant, 16 Madison Avenue, directly beside the house that he's talking about, rezoning into a business. Thank you.
Thank you. No, you take your mind. Okay. All right, anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Going ones? Okay. I will... Mr. Seaman, did you want to make a final comment here?
Just quickly. I think this is obvious to everybody, but one of the city planners put it best when they characterize 10 Madison as a snaggletooth in a line of commercial property. If you look on either side of the property, Ms. Bellisle's would be to the east. Dr. Hoskins has a parking lot to the west and this line is perfectly in line with those parking lots. So eroding into the neighborhood, I don't think so really. And I think that a case can be made to distinguish the Hunter property from 10 Madison. Directly across the street from the Hunters is Me, a residence and right next door to the south of the Hunters is another residence. 10 Madison is different in that respect. It's adjoined on all sides by office except for Arthur's house. I think that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. And Gwen, I think you had a question or a comment or a motion. That's an option too.
I have a staff question. Thank you. On the map that we have here, the one that shows the zoning, the blue line there. When this zoning was put in place, what would have been the reason why the snaggletooth was created?
So the pre-UDO zoning for that lot was R4, so it's been residential. We pulled up the old Sanborn maps just to see, trace the development of the area. It's been houses. It's been residential use. There, the development pattern along Chestnut were that these were those larger homes or with larger backyards. So when I looked, I couldn't, I found all of these homes, you know, existing. I didn't go back, I wasn't able to go back enough to see anything but a large backyard across from this house, but it was residential. It was, this was just the switch over from the larger residential structures along Chestnut into those little bungalows that characterized the Madison going north.
So those lots were not combined or rezoned? They were, I mean, they were rezoned in total? I mean, they were big lots that were rezoned to office?
I think so, yeah. It's intentionally residential, residential zoning and has been since it was built.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, motion.
I move to deny the conditional zoning request for Seaman's Law offices at 202 East Chestnut Street and 10 Madison Avenue from Office and RM8 to Office CZ and find that the request is not reasonable, not within the public interest and is not consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans in the following ways. One, the proposed change of use would be a loss of a residential unit when maintaining and preserving the available housing supply is a goal of city council. And two, non-residential incursion into an established neighborhood can erode residential quality.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from council?
Yeah, this is a tough one, folks. You know, the good people on all sides of this. For me though, I think it comes down to the fact that when homeowners purchase in a residential neighborhood, there's an expectation that the zoning, unless there's a compelling reason not to, that zoning will remain consistent for them. And, you know, Madison Street's been residential for 100 years as we've heard here tonight. I do believe that if we were to approve the rezoning of number 10, that would in effect start the dominoes down that road whereby the next property owner and beyond could legitimately say that they should have non-residential zoning as well too. I think for the residents there, and again, we've good people on all sides, but I'm going to vote against the rezoning.
So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That concludes the public hearings. Oh, no, it does not. I need a motion to continue item E until February 24th, 2015.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. And anyone wishing to comment on the motion to continue item E on the public hearing agenda until February 24th, 2015? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and I will hand it over to the vice mayor for the boards and commissions.
Thank you, Mayor Manheimer. Boards and Commissions Committee met earlier this afternoon to consider a number of recommendations we might make to council and I'll start with the first item on the agenda. Board of Adjustment. Boards and Commissions Committee recommends that Philip Harden and Richard Fort, both of whom are currently alternates, be appointed as regular members of the Board of Adjustment. They have both indicated interest in doing that and that appointed as new alternates would be the two applicants, Pratik Bhakta and Christine Longoria. So that would be a motion by the Boards and Commissions Committee.
Vice Mayor, I think you often need to include the Mr. Holder and Mr. Summerlin as also.
I'm sorry, that's correct. Reappointment of those two. Daniel Summerlin and Nelda Holder. That is included in the motion. Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Next item, the Chair of the Civil Service Board. The Boards and Commissions Committee recommends that we put off for one month, that was the suggestion, one month to make that appointment. That seat is currently vacant, but we need to process more and speak with potential candidates.
It's not vacant.
Oh, I'm sorry, the current chair has expressed interest in vacating it. So it's not technically vacant.
It's pending.
So one month, a month from the meeting, that would be the first meeting in February. Would we consider that, Maggie? Does that require a vote?
No, not to take action, no.
Community Relations Council. Boards and Commissions Committee recommends reappointment of Rachel Tankley Russell and Mike Han and additionally that the vacancy be filled with the applicant Sandra Houts.
Second.
Vice Mayor, I'd be interested in interviewing Kelly Denson for that position as well.
Okay. Interested in that interview, so perhaps we should move to interviewing Sandra Houts and Kelly Denson. Does that sound reasonable to folks? Okay. We shall move forward in that, but let's vote on the reappointment of Rachel Tankley Russell and Mike Han first.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Downtown Commission, lots of interest as always in this board. We have three candidates, three current members who have expressed interest in being reappointed. Bauer Greiner, Michael McDonough and Jimmy Rents. Boards and Commissions Committee recommends reappointment of those three and makes that motion.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
I'm just really grateful to see how many applicants are here. I wish we kind of had more seats to squeeze everybody in.
That's true. Other comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Sexy. We have Lael Gray, who's a current city member that is interested in reappointment. I believe she's the chair currently, actually. The Boards and Commissions Committee recommends reappointment of Lael Gray, additionally appointment of Ms. Bray. That leaves, there are three, there's three seats available there. For the third seat, we would recommend interviewing Ms. McCombs and Mr. John Nor. So the motion is to appoint Bray and Gray and interview McCombs and John Nor.
So moved. Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Fowden's Relief Fund. This is a, one of our less active commissions. And we have a vacancy created by Lisa Gibbs, serving there and leaving and she's not eligible for reappointment. Boards and Commissions Committee recommends the appointment of Barbara Whitehorn, who is actually the city's finance director to that seat.
Second.
She knows we're doing that.
River has it. So there's a motion. Do we have a second?
I have a second to do.
Okay, thank you. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Metropolitan Sewers District Board, an important one. All are important, but this one is really important. Bill Russell, former council member, is serving a term that expires next week. Boards and Commissions, and he's not eligible for reappointment. Committee recommends appointment of Councilwoman Gwen Whistler to that seat. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on this one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Noise Ordinance Appeals Board. We have a vacancy that was the seat of John Hayes. The Boards and Commissions Committee recommends the appointment of Victor Farr.
So moved. Second.
Discussion there. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Tree Commission is our last item. We have two seats.
Five.
Excuse me, five seats that are vacant and Maggie, I've got a note here to interview five people. They're all appointments. I'm sorry, I used the wrong term in my notes. We, the Boards and Commissions Committee recommends the appointment of Leslie Ryder, Justin Price, Mark Williams, Carl Nyberg and Stephen Hendricks.
Could you list those one more time?
Leslie Ryder, Justin Price, Mark Williams, Carl Nyberg, Stephen Hendricks. And there were other applicants, so take a second to review that if you need to, Councilor. Smith.
Four out of five of mine, I think I'll settle for that.
So is there a second to that recommendation?
Second.
Any other discussion on that?
I would say, I would note that we had seven really well-qualified applicants, and it's, that, similar to Stacy, had a large pool of really well-qualified applicants, and I think it's terrific that we're getting people who are so willing to invest their spare time in things that are really important to the city. And I'd like to thank all, everybody who applied and keep coming. You know, I mean, if you really want to be on the Tree Commission, or Stacy, or whatever, apply again, because terms expire and so forth.
And, yeah, to add to that, we actually had a luncheon in this room at 12:30 today, hosting the chairpersons of all the Boards and Commissions, I think there are 40 of them, that we make appointments to, and the turnout was great, and the theme of the gathering, which is the first that's occurred in several years, was working together collaboratively better, so that Boards and Commissions really maximize their effectiveness in the flow of policymaking at the council, and a number of people commented that it seemed like a positive thing, so hopefully we'll, Cecil will see yet more interest in these things. So, we have a Tree Commission set of appointments that's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion for that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Mayor, that wraps it up, thank you.
All right, thank you. This brings us to the end of our meeting, and I have a few people signed up for public comment. The first is Lawrence Rice. Well, I'll have to do my own timer here, hold on a moment.
I've been a City resident since 1956 in Asheville. Since 1991, I've been a business and property owner in the city of West Asheville. In that time period, we've had windows broke out, we've had doors kicked in, we've had vehicles stolen, we've had, which brings us to the point, graffiti tagged on our building many times. We have done every attempt we can to keep our property in presentable condition. We have received letters from the city of Asheville stating that our property is a public nuisance. We don't feel that this is just. We have made many attempts with the city of Asheville Police Department to combat this graffiti problem. We can no longer afford to keep repainting our building and repainting it. We're here today to challenge this ordinance, because we believe the city is trying to make us responsible for something we have no control over. You know, where is the police presence? We also feel the contractors the city has hired to cover this graffiti is a waste of the taxpayers' money. The graffiti returns three or four days later, right where they've covered it up. In our opinion, we think the money the city pays to these contractors to do this patchwork job could be better spent maybe hiring a couple more officers to put on duty, maybe a special task force for this problem. We've been working with Asheville Green Works to clean up our property, because we have had about 200 tires that have been dumped on our property. I don't know if you can see that or not, which they readily come out and helped us remove it. Since then, we'd have stoves, refrigerators, appliances of all type dumped on top of us. We could not get any help from the city of Asheville itself to do this. Since then, we have filled our loading dock in with dirt and made a parking area to correct this problem. We don't know what else we can do, you know, to come into ordinance with the city of Asheville for this. We are currently working on our building in the rear. We have got a problem with the blockwork on it, and the blocks have to be stripped off before they can be fixed and painted. We only have a small spot of graffiti left on the back of our building, and this seems to be what, what the problem is. I have talked with Mr. Brad Hunter about this, I don't know if he's present or not. He said he would be here, but he said that he would see what he could do about getting maybe some paint remover to put on this and take it off. We just feel that it would be a waste of time and money to go up there and try to paint this, when the paint has to come right back off anyhow to correct our problems before it's painted.
Thank you. I don't have a buzzer or anything, but we're past the three minutes.
Okay. Once again, you know, it comes down to where's our police presence in this matter? And I appreciate your time and listening to my comments on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person I have assigned to, signed up is Jeffrey De, I can't, I'm not concerned, sorry.
Christopher.
De Christopher.
Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I apologize for my presentation being a little impromptu, and especially apologize for not being here to witness the rejection of the pipeline. That was what was voted on?
We had an anti-fracking resolution.
Anti-fracking resolution, thank you. However, I also would like to bring to light the subject of expanding awareness of and also increasing development in alternative energy, most notably in the continued use of solar and wind power. Now, I understand that we are already taking, making some progress in the field, but I think we should also enhance public awareness of it, and try to make good on our commitment to see that more solar farms are constructed in certain areas, and more wind towers constructed. Furthermore, I was also hoping that a certain division on alternative energy also be created on the basis of educating the public, on making possible the development of projects related to alternative energy, and also increasing public awareness of the benefits of alternative energy, notably preservation of the environment and reduction of carbon pollution, and of course, discuss some of the setbacks of alternative energy and how we can reduce them or completely eliminate them. Now, that being the case, I think I have nothing more to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The third person I have signed up is Rondell Lance, although I think everyone would call
Mayor, is it possible for me to get 10 minutes? I've got one of my board members here.
One, two.
Three.
Okay.
If it's possible. Thank you so much. Mayor Manheimer, Vice Mayor Hunt, members of council. My name is Rondell Lance, I'm the President of the Toronto Work League Lodge One here in Asheville, Long Island County. Once again, thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight and speak. One of the great things about our country is that we're, that we can speak and share our thoughts and our opinions, and we can agree to disagree, and still remain civil, respectful, and friendly. And that's what I plan to do tonight, to disagree, but do it in a civil, respectful, and friendly manner. The media has published statements in the last week, statements and opinions of the police, the police employees, and the Civil Service Board. Mr. Jackson was quoted in the Asheville System Times last week as stating, "There is a significant internal conflict in the police department. A big part of the problem is the Civil Service Board, which can reverse firings, motions, and other decisions about City employees." Section 7 of the Civil Service Law is referred to as Section 8. It states that whenever any member of the classified service of the city, which is the employees, is discharged, suspended, reduced in rank, transferred against his or her will, or is denied any promotion or raise in pay which he or she would be entitled to, that member shall be entitled to a hearing before the Civil Service Board to determine whether or not the action complained of is justified. I have to strongly disagree with what Mr. Jackson said and the quote that he made, and to state that the problem at the police department, honestly, it has very little anything to do with the Civil Service Board. To state that a big part of the problem at the police department is the Civil Service Board is so out of touch with what is happening at the department, and it deflects the responsibility to address the true issue, and to put the blame where it should never be. It's a mindset of ignoring the true and real issues facing the employees at the police department and the cause and the solution. When you focus on a cause that is false, then your solutions to that cause will be false, and will not work or resolve the true problem. I think, this is my opinion, Rondell's opinion, that when you hear a statement as that, it infers to me the mindset of saying, "If we didn't have that Civil Service Board to monitor our actions, we could put a stop to the people that raise issues about the way that we treat them and the way we run the department." The Civil Service Board causes us to follow policy, it causes us to follow procedure, it causes us to follow the rule of law, when we would just, when we would like to just do what we want without being questioned as to our motives or reason. Anyway, that's my take on it, that I perceived in that Miss Gaddy quote. Also, the mayor was quoted in a paper as saying the board should be stripped of its power. She also stated, "You can imagine, if a police chief and you have major issues, you may need to move people around, and maybe one person, but every time you do that, there's a potential going to be a grievance filed, and you're hamstrung," end quote. She's right that there's a potential going to be a grievance if the chief or the department head does not follow the policy, the rule of law, or the procedures in their actions. Once again, it seems that they're saying, "Don't question our actions, just trust us." Since 2012, Chapter 12, 13, 14, there have been six grievances heard by the Civil Service Board. Four ruled in favor of the city, two ruled in favor of the employee. Now, I ask you, does that seem like an unreasonable or destructive board that hinders a chief or a department from doing their job and from running their department? The mayor also stated, "I question whether or not a Civil Service Board is really needed or relevant," unquote. Citizens of Asheville, listen and research what the City officials are saying and what is their motive of trying to dismantle the Civil Service Board, a board that ensures that the employees of this fine city are treated fairly, and that the policies of the city and rules of law is followed when disciplined an employee. Who would be against such a board, only those that want free rein to treat employees as they please without any repercussion or any question? Please take notice who wants to get rid of the board. Some members of council, Mr. Jackson, department heads. Who wants to keep civil service, the employees, that made this city one of the best cities to visit in the United States? The city should be proud it is one of six cities that have a Civil Service Board. It should be used to promote people to come to work for the city, that cares for its employees, and uses a board made up of citizens to monitor the treatment of employees. If I can remind the citizens of how the board's made up, it's local citizens that volunteered without any pay to work. Two are chosen by the city, two are elected by employees, and those four pick a fifth. And to infer that this board and these citizens that are willing to serve the employees, you just talked about boards that are willing to serve the employees and serve this city in some way, is a hindrance to the progress and the working of the City employees, is a derogatory indictment to make toward the board and its members. I'm reminded of a case a few years ago, before 2000, I went all the way to North Carolina appellate court, and the court ruled in favor of the employee. I was in Durham, North Carolina, and ran across the judge, it ruled in that appellate And I spoke to him, he was surprised that once again, the city had appealed, the ruling for the appellate court. But I think that when a case goes to the Court of Appeals, they rule the same way the Asheville City Civil Service Board ruled. It gives status to that board, that they are properly doing their job, making the city follow the rules of law, making sure the city follows its own rules. Some issue that the money is a problem with the board. The Civil Service Law requires that the city provide a guy, attorney for guidance for at most 20 hours a year. The city has attorneys on payroll that I would have no problem if they advised the board of what the law states, or what the board has to do to being compliant with the rule of law. The money's not an issue. There are so many areas the city spends money daily, that if the public knew, would realize that to use a financial issue against the board is so unrealistic. We fought this battle in 2009, and ended up in a five-hour conference here in the city, with Martin Nesbit, God rest his soul, Susan Fisher, Mayor Bellamy, Mr. Jackson, Jan, I think, was in the meeting, firefighter union was in the meeting, I was in the meeting, and I'm not sure who else was in that meeting. We were able to reach a compromise that is in place today. We did not want to struggle with this again, but if need be, we are prepared, we are reaching out for our lobbyists in Raleigh, we are reaching out to legislators that can assist us in the goal of keeping the Civil Service in Asheville. I have nothing but respect for Mr. Jackson. We've met often, we've made lunch, and we've always, not always agreed, many times we disagreed, but I hope that we can continue to work together on issues and reach a civil or reasonable outcome, even if one side is not agreeing. I also have nothing but the utmost respect for the mayor. She has spoken, come to our lodge, and spoken to our FOP members. She did a ride along with me when I sergeant in West Asheville, and I was impressed with her wit, her knowledge, and I think she would have been a great police officer. I seen her in action out on the street on some of the cottles. But I want to, I respectfully, though, have to disagree on this issue, and that you reconsider your stance, and that no action to dismantle the Civil Service Board be undertaken by this council. It is very, very important to the employees. Thank you for allowing me to begin, and bring these issues to your attention, that be of the attention of the citizens of Asheville.
Thank you. A good timing, it was right at 10 minutes.
I'm practiced.
You were good, yeah. And I appreciate the comments. I recognize that this is a very serious issue, and that the City employees greatly value the role the Civil Service Board plays, and I do, I do hope that we can find a middle ground. I personally see that we have some challenges that the Civil Service Board presents in terms of trying to address some key issues within the department. Thursday, I'm meeting with Scott Mullins, the President of the Firefighters Association, to talk about this issue, and I'm absolutely glad to meet with the police as well. I anticipate that's part of the process. I don't intend to railroad anyone on this issue, and frankly, I don't think, from a political standpoint, anyone can. You mentioned bringing together a group of stakeholders to talk about the issues and reach a compromise that resulted in the current legislation, and that may be part of the process to get, get to what I think needs to be a better place. And I see Mr. Jackson raising his hand.
Yeah, I could just add to those comments as well. Rondell, I have the utmost respect for you as well. I'm not sure that we have that great of a disagreement about this. What occurred was, this was a meeting of the Independent Business Association, a business owner app made the comment that there was conflict in the department, and directly questioned to me as City Manager, what was I to point to do about it? I indicated, one, in agreement, total agreement with you, that we should engage a third party, and that we have Matrix Consulting there, did focus groups and is surveying the department, so we can get to the, are the real causes. I also then went on, the second part of my answer was to say that the city of Asheville operates under a very different set of rules and statutes than the private businesses represented in the room, and that specifically is that the city is one of six cities, six organizations in this state, that has a civil service system, and does not allow the city's management, whether that be in the police department or any other department, to exercise the same management discretion that every employer in that association has. And so that's the extent of my comments at that meeting. I hope that clarifies what was, what was asked and what the answer was.
But I appreciate you all coming down here tonight, very much. We, that's the end of the list of folks that have signed up. Now is the opportunity for anyone else who is here who would like to speak and have three minutes. I see one person, yes, come on forward. Just please begin by stating your name.
How y'all doing? I'm Claire Hanahan. I just want to welcome you to my neighborhood. I live here. I'm in the neighborhood here, and 300 other seniors, elders, live here. And three hundred other seniors, elders live here too, and we matter. We matter, and I'm not sure what strategy to use anymore. I'm not sure. I'm not a property owner. I'm not a person of wealth. I, I'm not a big business that you're going to give million-dollar incentives to. But every day I see us locked away from the life of the city because the sidewalks are not, um, adequately maintained. It's not safe to walk to Pritchard Park, but there are no benches around in between our area. Instead, we have a fenced-off gravel yard that says no trespassing. It's an affront. It's an affront to every single diverse, lively, and important elder in this neighborhood. I don't know what the solution to that is. I know y'all gotta make big bucks on money and so you can give out more incentives and have more hotels. We've got to honor the citizens that are elders in this community, and we've got to provide places where they can gather out front, maybe mix up with younger people, share a little bit of their wisdom. I don't know if you've walked around the neighborhood, you see folks gathered on the, clustered on the corner in front of the library. They have to bring their own wheelchairs out. There's no benches anymore. Um, many of us are pedestrians. For me to walk down Merriman is a very scary proposition when I'm heading to the grocery store. It's very hard to cross that street. Y'all need to consider pedestrians and give us a lot more attention. You're privileging carbon-emitting, climate-killing cars over people who live a much more simple life, um, and walk. Thanks for the Sunday bus service. Thanks for your interest in food security, but what's the security in when you're going to take your life in your own hands crossing the street to get to the grocery store? We've got folks on canes and wompers. They can't make it to Pritchard Park. Give us some green space when you're handing out these million-dollar incentives. Thanks for the fracking resolution. I mean, there's potholes to stand on and injustice issues from the top to the bottom in this country. This is my neighborhood now. It's the neighborhood of so many other wonderful people that we're hidden away in our little, small, little apartments because we, we come out and there's nowhere to sit. And I, I just want to say that, and that we matter. We matter too. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, once again, city council. My name is Timothy Saffler. And I, uh, have been, um, publicly, uh, negative about the Civil Service Board. Um, and, you know, I, I have an idea of how, uh, it might, there might be a better way. Um, you know, I, my big concern is that there are only two of the five members that are, uh, appointed by city council, you know, and thus the, the people, the, the voting public. So, you know, one, one thought might be to, you know, make it a majority or, you know, all of the members be, uh, appointed, um, by, you know, uh, the, the public. Um, I, I just think that the way it is right now, it, it causes, uh, a weird triangulation potential where, you know, it's, it's three people that are not put there by, you know, public officials, and there's a potential for, um, you know, uh, uh, confusion. Anyway, um, I, I, I wanted to also, uh, uh, make a suggestion, um, and, and that's to support any know-your-rights trainings, uh, any proposals for know-your-rights, uh, that may come down the pike. I'm, I'm personally involved in, uh, the Stop the Violence Committee and also the Click Talk. I attend those meetings regularly, and from what I understand, there will be a proposal for a know-your-rights training. You know, all the negative about APD that's out there, I think there are a lot of really positive things. Uh, there's a, a new program, Coffee with a Cop, uh, happening at Bojangles. Um, I'll be there. Uh, it's really great to see something like that. And I think we have a real opportunity to be at the vanguard of, uh, law enforcement and the general public working together through creative approaches, like Coffee with a Cop and, uh, the Know Your Rights Training. Um, I also want to give a, a shout out to Josh Dorfman, um, for, um, helping land, uh, Asheville as one of the top startup cities. Um, I, this guy's doing such a tremendous job. I'll be at Million Cups of Coffee tomorrow morning at nine o'clock at Risk Network. And then also they have a Pitch for Pitchers program that he's, uh, helped launch. And, uh, I just, it was really cool to see, uh, above the fold today that we're one, now one of the top, uh, places, uh, for a startup to, uh, happen. So, uh, thank you for your time.
Don't have too much coffee. There's a lot of coffee here, guys. All right, anyone else? No, I can't, I can't see that.
Mayor, um, if it would be possible for the gentleman that spoke first that had been tagged with graffiti from West Asheville?
Yes.
Could you come forward again? I, I really felt like that we had a little bit of a conversation.
Yeah, normally we're able to, I, I see. Who on gra, who's on the graffiti? Greg, are you on graffiti?
Yes.
Come on up. We're the lucky winner.
First of all, I just really wanted to thank you for coming forward. It sounds like you experienced a lot of problems that small business owners have. What's the name of your business?
I have absolute solid performance and small engine repair in West Asheville, maybe with Greg.
Right, and, uh, you know, I hope you've taken advantage of the, the, the fun. I understand what you're saying, but it's not fun to paint it off and then have somebody come back and get it. The next I've had that same experience too, and it, uh, was curious about, did you avail yourself of that city money to do that?
Well, they only got the, well, in fact, our building has not been tagged now in probably eight or nine months, but it's what's left over when they tagged it is the issue evidently with the city of Asheville. And like I stated earlier, we do have a problem on the block work on the building, and we can't paint it until we get this corrected in the spring.
So you've talked to Mr. Schuler about?
Uh, no, I've talked to Brad Hunter.
Yes.
Are you familiar with the, the property issue?
I, I am. Um, I, I was waiting around till after, afterwards to speak to Mr. Asperle, so, uh, sorry I haven't had a chance to do that yet. I talked to Mr. Hunter earlier today.
Okay.
Okay, so, so, yeah, no, you know what, you guys can...
Yeah, I, I just feel like that we needed to have that conversation because it, it, we, I feel like staffing, us at this table really are supportive of trying to make a better, better plan for dealing with this graffiti. It's not possible, quite frankly, to have enough officers to, to watch particular properties hour after hour. They, and, and these, the people that tag them are, are, are very good at what they do. They, they have, uh, they're, they're very smooth at getting in and out. That's part of the game. And it's regrettable we have it happen. It costs a lot of us real dollars, real time. I've had, uh, employees painting off graffiti and actually be mocked and laughed at by folks standing on the street watching. And it's, uh, it's not fun.
No, it's not.
It, uh, but I, I would tell you that we really understand the difficulty you're having, but there's got to be a better way of, of getting to the bottom.
Exactly. I mean, this, that's just trying to put a Band-Aid on it. It's just, you know, it's not working.
Uh, you know, what, and regrettably, one of the few things that does work is the fact that removing graffiti timely to keep it from just continuing to accumulate, and that, that has been proved in a lot of places. Uh, hopefully we can get to a base where the, we don't have so much of it hanging out there that, uh, that it hurt.
Well, what we have noticed is if, if you put some type of artwork, a mural of some type on it, that usually stops it, you know, from, from our experience. Uh, I don't know if that's a feasible plan or not, uh, not, maybe not for everyone, but, uh, I, I just certainly don't feel that it's right that, uh, you know, the victims should be penalized for something that they have no control over.
There are a group of artists in the River Arts District who've been talking about there, there are plans that have been used in other cities, getting grant money and recruiting artists and getting agreements with property owners who, you know, who will then permit it. And so it may be building. I don't know exactly what the status is there right now, but there are people talking about that kind of a thing. Because of course, you, you probably don't want to personally take on the total cost of a, a work of art.
Right.
But on the other hand, artists can't do it for free, and the paint isn't free and all that. So there, there's an effort being made, is all I'm saying.
Well, we have, uh, we have struck a deal with, uh, one or two of the artists to do a mural on some of our property, and, uh, you know, we'll buy the paint if they'll do it. And, you know, that's not a problem. Uh, but, you know, like I said, we just don't want to be held liable for something like this that we can't, you know, we fix it, and they come right back the next day or two and hit it again. And that's our, our position on it.
And we'll, so we'll let you all continue the conversation after the meeting.
Thank you for the time.
All right, is there anyone else that I missed that hadn't had an opportunity yet to speak during the public comment period? Okay. All right, we have a closed session. We have a motion. We have a really long motion.
We do. I move that the Asheville City Council go into closed session for the following reasons. One, to prevent disclosure of information that's privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina or not considered a public record within the meaning of chapter one thirty-two of the general statutes. The law that makes the information privileged and confidential is North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen dot ten three. The statutory authorization is contained in N.C. General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven A one. Two, to consult with an attorney employed by the city about matters with respect to which the attorney-client privilege between the city and its attorney must be preserved, including but not limited to lawsuits involving the following parties. The city of Asheville versus Robert Frost. Butterworth and all versus city of Asheville and all. Gannett Pacific Corporation doing business as Asheville Citizen Times Publishing Co. versus city of Asheville. The statutory authorization is contained in N.C. General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven A three. And three, to establish or to instruct the city staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the city in negotiating the terms of a contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase, option, exchange, or lease. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statutes one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven A five.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and I, I believe it will be adjourned from the closed session. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?